And this is the City of Iowa City's Work Session on September 6, 2022. And it is 4:00 PM. This is our special formal meeting, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. And the second item on the agenda is evaluations. This is to consider a motion to adjourn to executive session to evaluate the professional competency of individuals whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessity prevent needless and irreputable injury to those individuals' reputations and those individuals requested a closed session. Could I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
Can we get a roll call real quick?
Oh, before we do that.
On to business.
Yes. Why don't we, we'll start back at, I'll call the meeting to order, and then we'll do roll call.
Alter?
Here.
Burgess?
Here.
Harmsen?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
All right, welcome, everyone. Great. We are on to item number two, which is evaluations. Could I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Burgess.
Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. We will go to executive session and be back when we're done. All right, we are returning back to open session. Item number three, could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second?
Well, by Alter, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, a seven to zero. All right. All right, we're going to start the City of Iowa City Work Session Agenda for September 6, 2022. And the first item is our fiscal year 2024 budget preparation. And I'll hand it off to our city manager, Jeff Ruin.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is the time of year in which city staff are beginning to compile their budget request for fiscal year '24. So that really involves looking out and seeing what has been budgeted for in the last four or five years, revising those estimates, moving projects around as they see fit, and then also really focusing in on the operational budget going forward. Your review really does not start until late December, early January, but we always like to give you an opportunity as we're crafting our budgets to provide us any initial thoughts, ideas on initiatives that you would like to see funded, existing items that you'd like to see changed in some way, shape, or form, anything new, basically, because it's always a lot easier for us to incorporate initiatives into the budget when we're creating that budget as opposed to once it's presented to you in January. Not that the latter can't be done, it's just a little bit more difficult when all the funding recommendations have already been made. So no formal presentation tonight, just really an open forum for you to express any budget goals or thoughts that staff should keep in mind as we move forward.
I always appreciate this opportunity to have this discussion. This Thursday, we'll be having our strategic planning, continuing that conversation. So even though I know a few of the hot topics is typically housing, I want to kind of wait until after I hear on Thursday where the majority of council is.
I agree with that, Mayor, and I think we're really close. It's really exciting to see that prioritization matrix that we, I think, will be evaluating on Thursday, and we'll be able to give some very, hopefully, more concrete guidance at that point.
Any other comments at this time? We'll have it on a future agenda.
Yeah, Mayor, we always would prioritize the strategic plan agenda, so we can certainly include it, but you can just assume that wherever that lands this fall, that will also be reflected. But we'll reschedule it as you see fit, certainly.
Yeah, you know, it all depends on what, how council is on Thursday. We can play about here, but if this need to be back on the agenda, just reach out to any other counselors.
Thank you.
Anything else for this at this time?
Yeah, Mayor, we always would prioritize the strategic plan agenda, so we can certainly include it, but you can just assume that wherever that lands this fall, that will also be reflected. But we'll reschedule it as you see fit, certainly.
Yeah, you know, it all depends on what, how council is on Thursday. We can play about here, but if this need to be back on the agenda, just reach out to any other counselors.
Thank you.
Anything else for this at this time? We're going to move on to sidewalk cafe policy updates. We're going to welcome Rachel Kilburg.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So in your information packet last week was a memo on our sidewalk cafe policy and some updates that we were considering. So last year, the Iowa City Downtown District commissioned a sidewalk cafe policy case study as part of their downtown recovery brief coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. And then since then, the council and the city have received some, you know, subsequent advocacy to take a look at our sidewalk cafe program. So this memo, hopefully, had a chance to look at it, just provides a background on our program and includes some staff recommendations following our conversations among staff and with the downtown district. So I'll kind of walk through this memo, just hit the high points, I know it's kind of a lengthy one, and then take any questions or allow your discussion. So our sidewalk cafe policy is governed by both city ordinance and administrative regulations or administrative policy. In general, the goal of our program is designed to, you know, serve restaurants or other non-alcohol-based establishments, so coffee shops, ice cream shops. I'm not going to do a deep dive into all of that, like I said, but just kind of touch on the high points. So our fee structure, our base annual fee was set in 1995 and hasn't been raised since. In 95, so prior to 95, council had adopted kind of a flat fee structure, and then in 1995, they moved to a square footage model and set that flat fee rate at $5 a square foot, which is what it is today for those non-elevated sidewalk cafes. At the time that that was adopted, that council had, in their discussion, they had decided that that was proportionate to the amount of right-of-way area that a business would be using and profiting from. And then in 1997, the program was expanded to allow cafes to be placed upon elevated structures. So then, an additional fee schedule of $10 per square foot was added for those elevated structures, and again, that's what it remains today, for sidewalk cafes on elevated structures. During that time, they also implemented one-time refundable deposits for when a cafe is placed on an elevated structure, as well as for anchored fencing, and those deposits also remain the same today. And then they came back in 2007 and added a one-time refundable deposit of $1,000 for any cafes placed within city-owned planter beds. Just, this was kind of a higher rate, recognizing that those are a little bit more invasive and could be a little bit costlier if repairs were needed. And then in 2012, our program was again expanded to allow for cafes in the street under certain conditions, and so that was when the daily parking and bollard fees were established. Again, all of those remain the same today as what they were established when the council adopted them. Historically, we have waived fees in instances of construction, so the Ped Mall project, the Washington Street Reconstruction Project, and then, as you'll see in our recommendations, the upcoming Dubuque Street Reconstruction Project, sidewalk cafe fees were waived for the businesses directly impacted. And then for two years following the COVID-19 pandemic, we also waived fees for all cafes downtown. So as I mentioned, you'll see in the table, in the memo, that our rates remain $5 per square foot for non-elevated and $10 per square foot for elevated. And then depending on what the cafe is, there may be other accessory fees that apply, like a daily parking fee or electricity fee. There's one error in your memo, it says refundable annual deposits. Those are one-time deposits, so when a sidewalk cafe is started, they pay their one-time deposit, and that carries over from season to season. We currently only collect deposits for anchored fencing and any cafes that are placed upon a platform or a structure. Just to put kind of these costs in context, the average size of a cafe throughout the years is around 355 square feet, and that's an annual cost of $1,775 per year that that business would be paying. We collect around 80, just over 84,000 in sidewalk cafe revenues. That just goes into our general fund. Obviously, our general fund supports a wide variety of operations across the city budget, but it also supports our central business district maintenance operations budget, which is just over $285,000. So while sidewalk cafes are great amenity, they do, of course, require more staff time and resources to clean, maintain, repair the downtown, so that revenue source does help there. The Downtown District's sidewalk cafe policy looked at several cities across the United States. We also supplemented that with comparisons with Big Ten communities, as they're often facing, you know, unique issues that many other communities are not. So just some brief findings from that. Our fees were, most were charging either on a per-seat basis or square-foot basis rather than a flat fee. Our fees were a little bit on the higher end of the other cities that we looked at, but were comparable to both Madison and Evanston. We ourselves and the city of Columbus, Ohio, were the only ones who collected deposits. And then we also have some of the more complex fencing requirements. Many actually did not require fencing. We require durable fencing, anchored in some cases, or fastened. But what's important to know about fencing is, especially when you're looking at cities outside of the state of Iowa, is that the alcohol and beverage division regulates what, how cafes that serve alcohol must be delineated. So some other cities that we looked at may not have a similar regulatory environment. So then I'm just going to jump ahead to the recommendations. So there were several that we were able to act quickly on. There were others that, after review and discussion, staff did not recommend proceeding with, and then several others that we would recommend proceeding with. So those that we were able to act on immediately was designated right away for food and drink consumption, consumption, came before you, I suppose, over a year ago now, to continue that seasonal closure of North Lynn Street. And we worked with the Downtown District, and they were able to secure the licenses and the agreements necessary to allow alcohol possession and consumption on that street as well. So that's been a great addition up there. Infrared heaters, we currently allow those with the fire marshal approval. This may not have been clear to many business owners, so we just were able to clarify that. And then that next bullet point, we were able to create a sidewalk cafe FAQ document to just help answer some of those kind of questions that maybe weren't always so reader-friendly in the administrative policy or city code form. So then, moving on to those that we discussed and are not recommending, so permanently reducing or eliminating sidewalk cafe fees. We heard from the Downtown District, you know, advocacy at different times to either lower the per-square-foot rate, adopt a flat fee rate, or ultimately eliminate them altogether. We do believe that our current pricing model is fair. It's a fair way to assess it, assess it when you have cafes of varying sizes, complexities, and also just recognizing that they are profiting from the use of public right-of-way. We did find that it was comparable to other college towns, and since we have not increased these since, you know, mid-1995, we feel that these are still fair fees. Expanding cafe permitting to bars serving drinks only, we are not supportive of this because, again, our program is designed to serve those eating establishments. Currently, it would, it would need to be a code change to allow it as a non-conforming use, but really, the goal of our program is to focus on those establishments serving food, providing food service as well. And then a natural gas fire pit lottery system, our infrastructure in the downtown is just not built for that. It would be very costly to build that out. We do offer other electric propane heating options in outdoor service areas. We have approved private gas fire pits, you know, your The View, Joe's Place, Big Grove Brewery are some examples, and we would expect to follow that precedent, to recommend we follow that precedent if another situation arose. And then finally, moving on to those recommended, so as I mentioned earlier, we would look to, again, recommend waiving the sidewalk cafe fees during the Dubuque Street Reconstruction Project for any of those businesses directly impacted by the construction, and we would plan to bring that before you within the next few months. We also would recommend eliminating the collection of the one-time refundable deposit. Those were originally instituted to encourage property owners to make repairs on their own rather than place that burden on the city. However, we have found that even when we are making those repairs, we're not holding those deposits. And again, in line with our research of other Big Ten communities, not many other communities are collecting those. So while it will place a little bit more of a burden on the city in the event that we do need to work through an agreement to pursue costs for any damages, we do think that it's a change that could help some businesses remove one more hurdle to opening a sidewalk cafe. The Downtown District's case study introduced this concept of major and minor cafes. This really would just delineate between, you know, those larger, more complex cafes and then the smaller bistro styles. So I think the frozen yogurt shops are a great example, where maybe they don't necessarily need as strict of fencing requirements or something like that. So we are in favor of looking into this idea more, working with the Downtown District to figure out how and where this will work, and then coordinate whatever policy or legislative changes are necessary. I would point out that it's likely that if we don't go this route, a minor cafe designation would probably not be an option for establishments serving alcohol because of those ABD requirements I referenced earlier. Last on my page of numbers. All right, and then our next recommendation would be to expand sidewalk cafes to other areas throughout the community that it may work. Currently, they're only allowed in the CB2, CB5, and CB10 zones, which is really that downtown area. But especially as, you know, as a community, we're talking about more centralized commercial nodes and that 15-minute city concept, we do think there are other areas in the community where sidewalk cafes could apply. Town Crest and Old Town Village were two examples that came to mind when staff were discussing it. And then finally, we want to explore any options for seasonally relaxing regulations to encourage more wintertime cafes. This was one goal of the Downtown District when they originally commissioned the study. So we'd like to work with them to take a look at any fencing or furniture policy changes that we could make to just make it a little easier for businesses to keep active in the winter and keep encouraging that foot traffic in the downtown during the winter. Again, have to add that obligatory alcohol asterix to that, that if a business is serving alcohol, we may be more limited in what relaxation we can do there. So happy to cover anything that I didn't in my briefish presentation here, but if you have any questions, I can also answer those.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Could the, you referred to, it's really helpful getting this overview. I hadn't realized, actually, before I read the memo, how complex the whole system was. When the city does maintenance or the city does repairs, what is this, what is, what does that consist of generally? Because if they're, because if they're, if a cafe is occupying a certain footprint, what would the city be doing in that footprint?
Ron, you can jump in if you have anything else, but it's more if like a cafe leaves and they have anchored fencing, and then they move out and that footing isn't filled or, I don't know what the word is for it, that could be something that we need to come in and remediate after the fact.
Yeah, I think the easy example that Ron would probably mention is if you think of a Ped Mall brick, right? If you're going to anchor fencing into the Ped Mall, you're going to have to take up a brick, anchor that fencing in. And then if that cafe, if that business were to close, or they want to reconfigure the cafe in a future year, there's the repair to that brick, right? You have to buy a new brick and put a new brick in. That'd be probably the easiest example.
Right, but in terms of like regular upkeep or is there, is there anything that the city does, or is it basically?
No, when it comes to the fencing and cafe furniture and whatnot, that responsibility's on the owner. So there's really nothing ongoing unless there is some damage to the sidewalk panel or something like that, but that would be pretty rare.
Thanks.
Rachel, one question I had would be the, you know, the scope of the maintenance in the downtown area. So in other words, the Ped Mall, is the city responsible for, you know, if you have the building wall and then you have all the improvements, say, that were done in the most recent renovation, is all of that the city's responsibility?
We have an MOU with the Downtown District for cleaning, and so it's shared responsibilities. I guess I don't know specifically what you're talking about, but for example, power washing, the Ped Mall bricks, the alleys, and then kind of spot cleaning the corners, those are shared responsibilities between the city and the Downtown District.
But in terms of the capital, you know, the actual, say, the hardscape, the lighting, the seating, the landscape?
Anything that's outside of the sidewalk cafe property, the city would maintain, and then anything within the cafe, the business.
Both in terms of capital and operating costs?
Yep.
Yeah, the only, I think the exception I would offer would be the district does some accent decorative lighting. I think the holiday season, the Downtown District has fronted those costs historically.
So I'm kind of reading into this maintenance operation budget of $285,000. That's addressing that kind of, in my mind, more comprehensive aspect to the operations maintenance, correct?
Yep.
That's largely going to be your trash removal. You know, if you go down early in the morning hours, you're seeing staff drive through with kind of the smaller street sweeper, sidewalk sweepers. That's mostly what that effort is.
What's the fee structure for the Lynn Street area? How does that work out?
So the Downtown District owns the liquor license in Dram Shop for that area, and the cafes there do pay sidewalk cafes, yeah.
They pay for their sidewalk cafes. There's no fee because it's public seating. Anybody can sit there, whether you're a patron of a restaurant or not, so there are no fees to the businesses for the street seating, if you will.
One thing I brought up to Nancy previously was my concern with, you know, businesses that just because of where they're located or how they're located don't have a sidewalk cafe option at all. And so, you know, sort of minimizing costs for those that already have that additional benefit was one concern that I had. And I think things like the Lynn Street block help alleviate that in terms of, you know, that public, more shared area of the right-of-way. So I think any opportunities for that kind of thing are good. And then my last question is just the, the city provides, at least I think the city provides some permanent seating, like right in front of, on the Washington Street Reconstruction Project, right in front of Mesa Pizza? Like, it's not, I don't think it's a sidewalk cafe, it's built-in seats and a kind of a tall bench. How do we determine something like that? I mean, it benefits the most adjacent businesses probably more than some others, but I like those concepts, and I hope that we can keep doing that kind of thing.
Yeah, we looked at that, that was so, you know, it was very intentional during the Washington Street project to look at where cafes were at that moment and where they weren't, and then to try to introduce some alternative style seating, where we knew, like in that case, we knew there was a lot of folks that would go in and get pizza and needed a place to seat, but the restaurant there never had a sidewalk cafe and didn't really have any intention to do a sidewalk cafe. So it's just something we analyzed based on the current landscape at the time, and I think it's, I think it's worked out pretty well. So we'll look at that with Dubuque Street, too, to see if there's any opportunities like that. But most businesses in the food service will take advantage of any cafe opportunities that you give them.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I would add to that, I mean, one of the clear distinctions about those kind of benches that you're describing is that they are open to the public and cannot be, yeah, I mean.
Which I like, yes.
Yes, right.
Any other questions before we go into deliberations?
This is slightly coming from left field, but has there been any discussion between the district and the city about, you were talking about additional opportunities such as, like, winter, you know, relaxation, right, of certain rules, about outdoor heaters and things like that to be able to help?
Yeah, so we addressed some of that in the memo. So we currently allow electric and propane heaters with the approval of the fire marshal. I think what a lot of cafes downtown will run into is spacing requirements.
Okay, that was, right, I did, yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right, council discussion. I guess I'll jump out there. Well, I think it is, you know, we have businesses that do work hard and they're, you know, coming before us advocating for some relief. We understand the pandemic has, you know, affected a lot of businesses and food costs has gone up and all that. The one thing that I will say is there is a lot more that we need to do when it comes down to, or that I'm interested in, and that is, you know, exploring throughout our community other sidewalk cafes. So, you know, kind of expanding that opportunity throughout the community. We are also going to look at, you know, wintertime, potentially, if this council approves, which I think that would be great, to look at that wintertime exploring, what that would look And then the major and the minor cafe designations, what does that structure look like as well? So I think overall, I'm very comfortable with, you know, the fees. This isn't a public right-of-way. It does offer a boost to individual businesses. I mean, sidewalk cafes are a plus for businesses should they have one. So as far as the waiving of the fees, I wouldn't support that, but certainly looking at the wintertime, exploring that. The one question I would have while we're doing that is snow removal, to make sure that we have some type of a MOU, or if that seems appropriate, or because that does become a little bit of an issue downtown. If one person does their snow and someone else doesn't. The other thing that I might talk about when we're looking at any type of revisions, I didn't see where cleanliness around a person property had any type of association with renewal of their cafe, sidewalk cafe, but I do think that cleanliness around a property is very important, and it can be tied to that. I think that'd enhance compliance with keeping an area clean. Other than that, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing about the major and the minor cafe designations. What would that look like after we've done some research? We do have natural seats in the downtown area with some of our bricks that is placed, which is phenomenal. But looking at where benches are placed, I think would also be helpful in determining, you know, if it would even qualify for a major or minor. Other than that, I am happy to hear about the infrared heaters, that it is allowed, if I understood you correctly. So, yeah, I think I'll leave it at that.
Is it possible, this was, Nancy Byrd had actually emailed council this morning, and I don't know if it came into the packet, is it okay to speak to that or no? It was for all of us.
Yeah, you can speak to it.
Okay. I just wanted to say that it sounds like this has been an incredibly, you know, robust collaboration, you know, and that we're not quite there yet, but that there's been a lot that has been agreed upon. And so I just want to thank both staff and the Downtown District, and Nancy in particular, for being out there and swinging. So one of the things I did want to bring up is that, in fact, Ms. Byrd did mention, she's that they're not asking for a waiver. So one of the things I did want to bring up is that, in fact, Ms. Byrd did mention, she's that they're not asking for a waiver of the fees, but simply a reduction of them. $3 for cafes and seven on elevator structures. And in the memo that we have from staff, there is a table that demonstrates what the fee structures are for other cities. This doesn't seem to be out of line with that. So it is something that we could consider. I would agree that if these are the same fees, not if, since these are the same fees as were begun in 1995, that was extraordinary, it seems very high at the time in comparison. It seems like it has come down and it seems much more reasonable now, but it is still, based on this table, it does seem to be a little bit higher. I completely agree that in terms of being able to see this for a non-eating establishment, I don't think that that's ultimately where we want to go at all. So I'm kind of a mixed bag in, in terms of, you know, I, I think that the agreements that staff and the downtown district have come to are, are good and I'm for that. I do think it's worth considering the proposal or counterproposal, if you will, from the downtown district about reducing the fees somewhat. In, in honesty, I've thought back and forth about, I mean, restaurants make a lot of money in a weekend. But I'm also, you know, I go downtown and the, the restaurants really have been, they're, half of them have completely halved the amount of time that they're open. They're not open Monday through Saturday or even Monday through Sunday. It's like, we're talking three days a week. So I, I think that in, in times apart from COVID, I might think, ah, you know, maybe there's a little exaggeration. Obviously, you know, this is for profit, you want to make the most that you can. But in this instance, I think that there, there really may be some, some validity to this because this isn't just like, oh, well, we had to shut down for a little bit. It's like their, restaurants are not coming back for myriad reasons. But that truly is going to impact them in terms of how they can survive on a long term. So I just offer that up for consideration for people. $3 and $7 seems to me possible to consider.
Could I add just one thing to that? I, I want to make sure that I have made, made my statement clear. We are going to be, it sounded like if this council is in agreement, we're going to be looking at other opportunities, wintertime, minor and major sidewalk cafes throughout the community. And so a part of my concern is if we change the structure now, we know that there is food establishments, there's liquor establishments. You know, if you're in a prime area versus not so prime, I think if we change the fee structure, we could be put in a, in a place where we don't want to be potentially. That, that's the only thing I would add to clarify my position on that.
That's true, I agree with that. And I thank you Nancy for, for your memo because prior to that, even after just reading our information packet, I was, I was shocked that our, our fees were so much higher than surrounding Big Ten kind of university communities and that, that they were set way back in 95 at, at that amount. It, it just seemed like a little bit high on the high end. But as, as you said, Mayor, we'll, we'll be discussing that at, at some point in time and maybe adjust some of the rates according to location in the community. That'd be an option.
I'm grateful to see the elimination of the deposit. I think that will help, especially when people had said there was that, you know, upfront hit. I realize that's a one-time fee and for those who've been doing it for a long time, you know, they've already absorbed that cost. I think that helps. And I see the fee structure consideration coming with the major and minor distinction and that maybe those, you know, smaller, much simpler cafes would have a lesser fee than the more complex ones. I don't know that that would be the case, but I think that's something that staff should take into consideration and. But yeah, I, I agree with you Mayor, that I think let's implement the recommendations here and consider that with the, maybe the more simplistic cafes, you know, kind of have an open question as to the, the fee structure.
Yeah, if I could just, just jump in real quick. If you look at the, the specific portion of the memo on major and minor, staff does, does indicate that it would kind of address situation, policy provisions such as fees, fencing, spacing regulations. So I think we would be certainly open to that idea if there's no fencing required. If it's just a couple of seats outside your, your yogurt shop, if you will, then, then there, there could be a lower fee tier for those types of businesses.
I would agree with all of that. One question I had, and I noticed that some of this, talking about fencing and I, I get like good fences make good neighbors, plus there's the alcohol issue, all that kind of good stuff. The other thing I noticed too, look comparing to other cities was with the fencing requirement existed and what those look like, is there anything in terms of what we require in terms of the materials for the fencing? I know we have, we have a pretty elaborate one compared to other cities. Maybe it's exactly what it needs to be, but I was just wondering if anybody had any thoughts about like, is there a, another way that we, that the city could be part of a, you know, cost savings while still accomplishing all the things that the current fencing needs to, to do? And I don't know that that's what the answer to that is, but that's one question I had as I was reviewing this material. So I don't know if anybody has a thought on that at this point in time, but maybe it's just something to put in the mix.
I think, you know, that we do require a durable material and we're, I think there's multiple acceptable materials. I could tell you just visiting a few of these cities that, that have cafes, I'd be hesitant to move away from a fencing. I originally thought that that may be something to do, but I've seen some, some other delineations not work so well in practice. I was in one of these communities recently and it was just kind of empty, old kind of whiskey barrels with rope tied around it. And looked neat, but you get these sagging ropes that, that kind of hung down on the sidewalk. And you could see where, where cafe lines weren't exactly straight. And as a pedestrian, it really influenced, you know, how you walk. So I, I think we're open to, to looking at other options. I think we've been open to like planters in the past that are, that are durable, that could provide some enhanced aesthetics. But I would, I would hesitate to go something that's easily movable because we, we would see that creep a little bit. And, and we, we try real hard to maintain that eight-foot walkway at all times. And I think without somebody that's going out there and looking at it on a regular basis, that eight feet becomes seven feet, becomes six and a half feet. And I just don't, not sure that's something that we want to get into. But if there are other structures that could provide that same durability that, that are maybe easier for, for businesses to, to afford when they're investing in their cafe, I think absolutely we're open to that.
And then one other thing, looking at, I was assuming just, this was kind of implied, but there is a challenge created between the needs of the fencing, what the fencing accomplishes, and then in wintertime with snow removal because they're in the way probably for the, you know, it makes it much less efficient to clear off and all that kind of, kind of thing?
Yeah, I think that's something we just have to, we have to keep in mind. And, and I think we're really looking at how can we enable businesses to take advantage of those nice winter days, right? It's, it's early December or maybe it's late February and you get a, you get a stretch of really nice weather where people want to be outside, but we're not ready to put up those fences yet or, or the fences have just been taken down. How can we make it really quick and easy for businesses to take advantage of those opportunities?
Yeah, I did, I did find it interesting that, and this was a very, very useful memo. Thanks for preparing it. It really provided the history and just all the different aspects of, you know, the sidewalk cafe concept. And it was interesting to see that with the fencing requirements, you know, Ann Arbor has none. So I, I don't know, I sort of, I wish Ann Arbor were a little bit closer. I would love to kind of see how that's managed because Ann Arbor and it's not alone, Columbus, Champaign, they're all year round. How do they do that? But yeah, I think overall the, I'm in agreement with the, with the recommendations. And, you know, I, I think one of the concerns I have is, you know, if we're depending upon, I'm certainly interested in seeing if we can reduce the fees perhaps along the lines of the distinction that was, we're, we're looking into. But at the same time, you know, we have a $285,000 operating budget. And, you know, that $84,000 can help go toward, you know, bringing, making sure that we're, you know, you know, that, that if that money doesn't come in, then we have an $84,000 hole. And, and what is that, how does that affect our other operations? And I, I also have wondered if, if these other cities, university towns, Big Ten towns, have the same kind of operational maintenance requirements that we have. We have the Ped Mall.
Trying to silence my phone, I pushed the wrong button.
The, you know, the Ped Mall is, are, that's three city blocks of public open space that the, the city maintains. I'm not, I, I haven't been to Ann Arbor in many years, but I suspect, you know, what you see in Ann Arbor and probably most of these other cities are sidewalk open spaces. It's not the entire public right of way that's under consideration. So there is a, there is a higher level of investment that Iowa City has in its downtown with, with the Ped Mall. And consequently, you know, a higher operations cost. But again, I think it's, this looks like it was a very useful discussion between staff and the downtown district. And thanks Nancy for paying such attention to this issue. And I look forward to any further improvements we can make on it.
If I, if I may, just real quick, because I think it's to Councilor Thomas's point, the, the maintenance budget that was cited in the memo was really the, the trash pickup and the basic cleanup. We didn't go and look into the parks and rec budget for the maintenance of the planter beds or the streets budget for maintenance of the, of the lights and the stage, you know, components. If you start to do that, that $285,000 operational budget suddenly gets much bigger. That's really just the bare bones, keep it, keep it clean budget.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that, that you recommend eliminating the refundable deposits as I think that probably does cause an upfront barrier. I hope we'll continue to look at the overall fee structure as, as we look at different kinds of cafes. The only, I guess the only thing, and I really appreciate this overall effort, the only thing that I'd add is anything we can do to simplify any of this going forward so that it's, it's really simple and understandable for businesses, also easier for the city would be great.
Yeah, I, I did look at Evanston's permit process and they did have different fees depending upon the type of business was under consideration. So there was kind of a range in, in the fee structures, which kind of speaks to the, you know, this distinction we're trying to make between the major and minor cafes.
Any other discussion on this? Staff, do you have what you need?
Well, so there's, as Rachel mentioned, there's two components. There's the, there's an ordinance change that'll need to happen to address some of this. And then there's the, the regulation piece that, that follows. We're happy to prepare this. Thinking what I heard from the majority was the fee structure stays the same except for minor cafes. There's an agreement to look at lowering for that tier. If there's a, if there's a, a push to, to lower for all cafes, we need to know that before we prepare that ordinance. And we'd like to do that this fall, well before folks are starting to renew for next spring. So can I just get clarification on what direction for the, the fees themselves?
I might make a suggestion is that you bring that back to council before it's on our agenda for a vote. So in a memo or?
Another work session?
You can do it in a memo. And then we can, I think we should probably see those minor cafe rates. At least that would be my personal preference. Or do people just want to see it in, you know, sit on the agenda?
I understood Jeff's question as are we, is there direction to overall reduce the rates? Are we just looking at bifurcating, keeping the rate structure the same for presumably major cafes and looking to potentially reduce for smaller? I think that was the question.
And I think I was the only one who actually brought up the lower rates.
Okay.
So as long as we have, there have been multiple options for different scenarios in terms of the future. So I'm, I'm in the minority here, I think.
That's kind of where I was coming from too, is, is perhaps lower rates because I just think, you know, us standing out with such, so much higher rates than other Big Ten universities, but doing the different parts of the community, depending on where the location of.
I think the reality, I think the reality is, is we could change whatever we want if it's on the, on the agenda. We can adjust amounts. But your question is?
Yeah, I think our, our next step would logically be to, to bring you the ordinance and then the, the regulations that, that go along with that. I just want to make sure that all the blanks are filled in. I'd rather not bring you a, an ordinance and just have you decide that evening unless that's what you want. But so it's, yeah, do you want a second work session item on this topic to, to hammer out the fee structure? Or do you want staff to just recommend a lower rate on the minor cafes and come back to you?
I would, I would be okay with that.
You might also, I thought, the other thing that I thought I heard was looking at potentially different rates in different areas of town that if, that a.
And that may not be.
Which may not, may not be doable, but that's something that I heard. And it would also, would this, when, when a, a new ordinance passes, is it, is it at that point that deposits already made would be refunded?
Yeah, we'd have to figure out logistics on that, whether we just credit that amount for a renewal situation or we actually refund. But yeah, we would be able to move on that fairly quickly, I would think.
I know that I saw two heads over here and I would be okay with just bringing it on, on an agenda. I don't know. So we have four. So just bring it on the agenda in the future and we'll go from there. Any other items? All right. Let us go to information packets. We'll go with August.
I'm sorry, I did have under clarification of agenda.
Oh, I am so sorry. Clarification of agenda items.
Yeah, I just wanted to, in the consent agenda, I just wanted to make a comment on the Climate Action Commission's notes and then also on, so 4A and then 6E, I just had a question.
Go for it.
So with the police vehicle procurement, if I'm understanding it right, these are replacements, correct? These are not in addition? These are not additional vehicles?
That's correct, we're not, we're not increasing the fleet. We're just replacing part of the fleet that's aging out. And then real quick, because I had another counselor ask a couple of questions on that item, I can fill in some blanks. We, we typically replace patrol vehicles every three and a half to four and a half years. At that time, they typically have a little over 90,000 miles on them. They are, they are hybrid options. We do not have an option for electric at this point. There's very few electric cars that would be rated for police, for police duty. And like all electric cars right now, the lead time on actually getting one, if you can actually get into an ordering system is, is substantial. So we, we couldn't take advantage of that now, but it's definitely something on our radar.
Thanks.
And 4A?
Oh, I just wanted to wait until.
Oh, that was all.
Sorry, just to let you know that I.
Great, sounds great. Anything else for the clarification of agenda items? Information packet, August 25th. Information packet, September 1st. Thanks, Councilor Harmson. I don't remember what agenda I, what IP it was, but seven for the, for the film, A Decent Home. Very powerful film. I hope there's more opportunities for people to see it here in our community.
Yes, thank you and thank you. It was, and again, the, the information in the packet is just some additional background information from advocates for mobile home residents and some of the stuff they've been looking for at the state level, even though we're not setting state law here, as we look at local policies and things like that, I thought that might be a good piece of information to have in front of us, so.
All right, we're going to ask the University of Iowa student government to come up with their updates. Hello.
So to start off today, we'd like to talk about how the federal loan forgiveness program will be taking $10,000 off of all federal loans, $20,000 for appellate grant recipients, and 125 for a single, as well as 250 for double filing limits. The applications for that are going to be open until December 31st of next year, and that's just like really exciting for us all as students in the Iowa City community. At the end of this past August, the Stanley Museum of Art opened on Burlington Street, and it is the first-of-its-kind museum in Iowa City as a collection of works by both global and Iowa-based artists. I hope you all have had the opportunity to get to go see it. I particularly love the Generations, as well as History is Always Now exhibits, and their overall homecoming. Additionally, our fall nominations for Senate have begun with nearly 100 students applying to join student government. So I'm really excited to see a, hopefully, a much more diverse student body representing us. And as you all know, I've decided to resign from my position as city liaison, and I'm excited to see how Keaton will continue to push this position forward. Applications for the deputy position are being coordinated now, with more information to come definitely before the end of this month, but...
All right. USG's External Committee is beginning to work on creating a student org liaison program so that we can do better, be better connected with the student body where they're at. More info is to come. Additionally, the Sustainability Committee shared coupons at the farmer's market. And this Wednesday, some of our executive board members are visiting Clinton for a mental health roundtable to speak with state legislators to discuss mental health issues and seek funding for mental health resources.
That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you both. And Council, we're going to go ahead and adjourn until our 7:00 PM, 6:00 PM formal meeting, and then we'll be able to give updates of assigned boards, commissions, and committees at that time. We are adjourned.